Ready? Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. All three commissioners are present. It was properly posted on October thirty-one. And I will lead us in the prayer and pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to get together and conduct the people's business. Well, I suggest you'll have a special hand on all of our employees that are out working in the field. And those who are encountering the public today may have a pleasant experience and know that we are all public servants doing your will. In your name, amen. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-nine?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Push button, Jason. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
Motion to approve the claims.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opening of the bids.
This first one is for CW two-six zero-three-one dash one, Lawn Maintenance Supplies. We received one bid from Madison Turf Farms.
That's it. Okay. Is there a motion to tabulate and return?
Motion to tabulate, return.
So what title for? We're just gonna do one at a time? Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is for CW two-six oh-two-four Online Auction Services. First bid is from Purple Wave. Second bid is from Royal Auction. The third one is from GovDeals. And that's it.
Move to be tabulated and returned.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now the opening of the bids. Or the recommendations, I'm sorry.
Uh, this is a recommendation for the project on Southeast fifteenth to Southeast twenty-ninth Street. Four firms were shortlisted from the pre-qualified list. All four firms accepted invitations to interview. They were Guy Engineering, CEC, MKEC, and Lochner Engineering. Interviews were conducted on October twenty-third, and the evaluation committee consisted of representatives from engineering in District Two. Based upon final determination of the scores of the evaluation committee, it's recommended to award to the most qualified firm, which is MKEC.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
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 This is a recommendation for correctional facility equipment and supplies used by our juvenile justice center, CW two-six zero-two-seven. We received seventeen bids, and based on final evaluation of all the bids received, we're recommending award to lowest per line item with the following exceptions. Uh, lowest and best on category one would, uh, one point two and one point four were awarding together as shampoo and conditioner said, and that would go to Bob Barker for both items. Item one point five is life shampoo. That is lowest and best. Um, the next low has been efficient with correcting issues and preventing allergic reactions, uh, which some of the other products, they have experienced that before. That goes to ICS jail supplies. Item one point six, conditioning wash and shampoo is lowest and best based on allergy concerns and recommendation from their medical team. Item one point twelve is white marble soap, based on allergy concerns and a recommendation from the medical team over there. Award goes to Bob Barker. And then items one point two-two and one point two-five, deodorant products, um, we're not going to award that. They're a very specific size that the juvenile center needs, and those were not bid. They are available on other contracts. So it won't be an issue. Item one point two-nine is an anti-shape disposable razor. That is lowest and best based on security needs, and that will go to Bob Barker. Category two, there is a heavy-duty canvas with Velcro. We've had multiple issues with different various vendors' products on this previously, so we're choosing not to award and come back with different specifications. Category three, textiles, is going to be awarded to low per line item with the exception of three point one through three point three. That's mattresses, mattress pads, and mattress pillows due to the minimum order requirements, and that goes to charm texts. Category four is lowest per line item with the exception of four point seven and four point eight. This is a mop head and a handle, and we are not awarding due to security concerns of the items that were bid, but they are available on other contract vehicles. Um, Seleni Supplies, sorry, items one point, five point one and five point two are radio and earbud sets. Those are lowest and best based on the department recommendation regarding durability and tamper-proof products, and that would go to Bob Barker. Item five point three and five point six, cups and trays, we're awarding as a category to lowest and best per department recommendation, and that is to essential care supplies. And then items, uh, category six is medical. Um, six point one, six point seventeen, six point two-two, six point two-five, and six point three-zero four through three-three are not awarded, uh, sorry, due to being available on state contract. And that concludes it.
Okay.
Move, we accept the recommendation for the purchase.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any change to the blanket? Okay.
Motion to move the blanket.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any individual consideration on the consent document? If not?
Move items eight through eleven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the twelve, I regretfully have to accept the resignation of Herschel Lamorin, who's only served this approximately thirty years and, uh, has tremendously given to this county and in many ways with his long-decorated career, and wish him well, as he is totally going into retirement. So with that, I will move to receive his resignation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And likewise, for item thirteen to replace him is Jennifer Arsenault, and there is a bio attached for your consideration for the District Two appointment to the Home Finance Authority. That I will make the motion for her nomination.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, sadly, received a resignation from Shelley Perkins, who's served with distinction on the criminal justice authority, and, uh, this is one of our at-large positions. So it serves all three of us. I just put this on here to receive. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank Ms. Perkins for her service. County clerk. This is just the scheduled meetings.
That is correct.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Joe, do you have something to say?
Mike, this is, uh, the meeting schedule, and, uh, Wednesday, November twenty-fifth, the day before Thanksgiving. Was wondering, I think our office was wondering if we might consider doing either the Monday or the Tuesday, uh, simply because of the number of people that are traveling, uh, on Wednesdays. So I don't know if I caught that in time, sorry.
Yeah, it's in time if y'all want to amend it. We've done it both ways in the past. I have no, I'll be here, so it makes no preference to me.
Motion to amend to the twenty-third?
All right, so you want to withdraw your motion that we have here? Ready?
Yeah, okay. Uh, I amend, uh, request a motion to amend to November twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you for that. Stacy.
Item sixteen is the selection of our bridge inspector for the next couple of years. Uh, Conser's been doing it, been doing a good job, so we're recommending stay with them for another cycle.
Is there a motion?
When you say a couple of years?
They've, they've done the inspections on two cycles. This will be two more.
And it's just to add a cycle? Just one more cycle? Or?
It'll be two.
It'll be two more years, okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then item seventeen is in our Luther Road corridor. This is another payment to Pinnacle for their right-of-way work. The money's actually held at ODOT, so we're just, uh, acknowledging they've done the work, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then item eighteen, uh, this item will allow us to remove the asbestos from the elevator shafts, so we can continue on with that elevator work. It's a, uh, contract with, uh, Whiten Associates for three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. And that's both, uh, banks of the elevators, east and west, um, in this building.
Thank you for finding a solution to that. Thanks for being a part of the solution, Troy. Uh, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, uh, this item is a rezoning application that is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Northwest Hundred and Seventy-Eighth and MacArthur. The applicant is wanting to rezone approximately two hundred and twenty-eight acres. I do want to make a note of that property, eighty acres, is in the special flood hazard area, and so my assumption would be that when it comes to the planning process, they would probably leave that as common area. So with the remaining property there, they're wanting to utilize, uh, that as residential, and they're gonna build ninety-two lots on that property. So just to kind of give you an idea of the area there, I know Commissioner Davidson is familiar, but just for the other commissioners, um, you have this northeast corner, there is some commercial, uh, that is not being utilized at this point. There is a TP church, uh, across the street from the west, there's Deer Creek Hills. Most of those lots in there are three-quarters of an acre. They are, there's approximately sixty homes, and that subdivision is zoned R zero, uh, which basically gives them the ability to go as far down as six thousand square foot lots. Again, most of those are three-quarters an acre, and they're on Oklahoma City Sewer and Deer Creek Water. Uh, there is a commercial corner there as well that is being utilized to some degree, but not to its full capacity. Um, on the southwest corner, there is quite a bit of commercial and industrial that's going on there. There is a storage facility, uh, feed lot, uh, there's a big warehouse that's there that's being utilized. Then you have the metals of MacArthur Park. Uh, it is zoned R zero. Those lots are six thousand square foot lots. Uh, they're approximately forty acres, there's a hundred and twenty homes there. That is on, um, Oklahoma City Sewer and Deer Creek Water. That's been out there since, I want to say, two thousand and eight, give or take. And on the southeast corner, there's this, uh, commercial, some strip commercial that's directly on the corner that's been out there for the last, uh, five or ten years. Uh, I would say it consists of about eight acres, if I recall correctly. Uh, this particular development here, they're not gonna be utilizing Oklahoma City Sewer. Uh, Oklahoma City is currently on a moratorium. They are trying to address some issues with their Deer Creek Water Treatment Plant. So they're, they're a good five, six years out before that issue is solved. They do have the possibility of utilizing Deer Creek Water, but with one acre lots, that is not a requirement. Uh, they can use well water if they so choose, just based on the size of the lots. So that's all the information that I had, unless you have any specific questions. Uh, the applicant's engineer and legal representative are here, if you have any additional questions.
It's your district.
And the recommendation of the planning commission?
Uh, the planning commission recommended approval. This was in front of them on the October sixteenth agenda.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time to be here today. Paul?
Uh, item number twenty is a new policy regarding the capital-as-needed fund. The policy ensures that funds can be accessed quickly during an emergency, such as the flood that we just had at the courthouse. Uh, this will allow the county manager would have authority to establish a project code, create project, uh, budget line items, uh, determine the funds needed from the capital-as-needed budget, and then direct requisitioners to requisition against those allocated funds. The county manager would then, uh, provide a summary report to both infrastructure and VOC City. This was, uh, approved by majority vote at the last infrastructure meeting, and we would recommend approval.
Motion to receive the recommendation.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff?
Copies of a contract.
We need to move to receive this. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, so this is a contract with a company called Off Duty Management. Um, there's a big, there's a big nationwide push for these companies to come in as a vendor, represent municipalities and counties and state governments. And what they do is they provide a service that where, say, it, it manages the off-duty employment of our, of our law enforcement officers for purposes of security. So if Prosperity Bank wants to have a, a deputy in, in one of their bank lobbies, they would engage the services of, uh, off-duty management. And if they're, if the deputy is making forty dollars an hour or whatever, Off Duty Management, um, collects, you know, their fee from the vendor, so it's a no cost for the county. Um, some of the byproducts are, um, general liability insurance, um, 'cause there's some ambiguity in, in terms of the deputy being off duty and what action he's taking. I know you guys are all familiar with that. We've had some issues in the past, questions. This, to the extent possible, we believe, plugs those holes, um, primarily for the deputy and, you know, and for the county. So, um, I can answer questions about the operational side of it. If you have questions about the contract or any of the, things of that nature, that would be a Cody question.
My question is that the DA had a chance to look at this.
I don't know that we sent it to the DA.
I mean, it's just been handed to me. It's eight pages of tiny print, mostly single lines, so I, I'm not consuming this at this moment. I just didn't know.
Yeah, no, this has not been sent to the DA's office. I reviewed it, uh, drafted with ODM. Uh, this is a vendor that is on a nationwide source well contract. We did verify that that contract is, uh, still valid, uh, through the purchasing department. Uh, this is a no-cost-to-the-county, uh, contract. This is a vendor that is just providing some liability, um, coverage for the county and our deputies. Like, uh, Mr. Anderson had mentioned, we've had some holes, uh, in there as, as, as it relates to liability. This is a way that we can fill that hole.
Which I certainly appreciate. I just, I'd like the DA to sign off on contracts that I vote for. Nothing against you, but just to make sure there's not a problem, but it's the pleasure of the board.
We'll say, uh, Oklahoma City is in final negotiations with them. Their, their negotiations are with their FOP, off with the vendor. They're going this direction now, so it's happening nationwide.
And I will throw out, this is on a nationwide contract to source well. There's many offices, uh, elected official offices that have engaged in contracts such as these that do not come across this board for approval because they're not required. We felt like that was important to notify you guys and let you know, because this is something that is not just protecting the sheriff and sheriff deputies. And our agency, it protects the county as a whole. We thought it was an opportunity to bring everybody together.
So one of the big hang-ups of the DA always uses this, uh, venue.
Uh, initially, the contract was, um, venue of the state of Texas, because that's where they are located. If you notice on this contract, that has been adjusted. Uh, the law and venue on this contract is the state of Oklahoma.
Yeah, where is, is that six, I'm just six-six so far. I think this is a good thing, uh, the liability, and then are they paying for the defense as well of the individual, should they need it? Or is that probably gonna be FOP and FOP represented?
That would be, that would, that would be under a, a separate, um, agreement between the, the individual and the, um...
And then there's a million dollar each occurrence, general liability, with five million aggregate, which is good.
If you look at, um, paragraph eight point three, governing slash law jurisdiction, the agreement, and any and all disputes directly or indirectly arising out of or relating to this agreement shall be governed by and construed in accordance with the laws of the state of Oklahoma without reference to the choice of law, uh, rules thereof. Each parties, each of the parties hereby irrevocably consents and submits to the exclusive jurisdiction of the state and federal courts located in the state of Oklahoma for any such disputes.
Excellent. I am waiving any objections to laying the venue. Jason, you're an attorney.
Do the DA's office normally review contracts you bring before this board?
Uh, some contracts, yes, some not. It, it depends on the situation. Like I said, this is technically not one that has to come before this board, and I think there's lots of, um, offices that do not send, um, contracts such as these through the board, because the board, uh, signs off on those national source well-type contracts, and so they're able just to approve them, uh, via that mechanism. Uh, we wanted to go ahead and bring this here, but I, I have had eyes on these. I will, I review all of our contracts. Some of them we'll send over to the DA's office, some of them we will not.
Any, any reason why this one was a sensitive DA's office?
Uh, just from a timing standpoint, and this was not something that is, is required. I mean, we could have just sent this through and not even, um, brought it onto this agenda, so... They're, they're inundated with a whole lot of work. That was part of the reason, uh, bringing me on was so that I could help speed up some of the processes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
All right, Commissioner Commiss, District One, three.
Uh, this is green light month. Uh, we'll be bringing a resolution to, uh, make sure that we recognize veterans that have served this country and that, uh, suicide is still one of the leading causes of death amongst, uh, soldiers. And I know one, this is a great month to reach out to them. Uh, it gets, during the holidays, it gets pretty lonely for some of these guys, so not only veterans of, of war and, and our services, but, you know, our, our servicemen that are here local, our police and our firefighters and our paramedics, they, they serve in really high-stress jobs too, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers, uh, you know, at this time of season, and reach out to them if you know them. Thank you.
Certainly appreciate their service. Any new business? If not, is there a motion to recess into executive session?
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.[251.79]
Motion to return.
Motion to return.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Action on item twenty-three. Is it appropriate to say deuce, proceed as discussed or is there something specific? Okay, council says that's the appropriate motion. Proceed as discussed. Is there a motion?
Motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Citizens to be heard.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Davidson, can I get your phone please? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If there's none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everybody in? I'll call the meeting to order. All three trustees are present. Notice that the meeting was properly posted on October thirty-first. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty-nine?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'm sorry, who motioned and seconded on that?
Motion second.
Thank you.
Is this for item two? Or you made the motion?
This, this is for item one. Give me just a moment, please, sorry.
Yep.
This is for item one.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Now item two is the claims. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is the scheduled meetings and I assume you want to correct it again for the companion item in the previous meeting.
The motion to amend to November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
Twenty-six. You want it to be twenty-six.
I thought it was twenty-three.
Yeah, but you said twenty-five.
Oh, I apologize. Um, November twenty-third.
Twenty-twenty-six, okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Item four is additional five parking spaces. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any citizens to speak for board comments or new business? Hearing that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye.